The order of the Carney School District Board of Education General Meeting, please rise for the board, for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Met Baker.
Here.
Len Broughton.
Here.
Meredith Cole.
Meredith is joining us by video tonight, so I think we have her hooked in, just so.
Yeah, I can see her. Meredith Cole. Here. John Kern.
Here.
Reese Schweitzer.
Here.
Nick Foskis.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here. Do you have a quorum? So next, adopt, amend the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Vote. School spotlight, Mr. Masker, Carney Elementary.
Hi, everybody. We've got a couple of treats for you tonight. So the first thing that we're gonna do, come on over, guys. We've got some artists at Carney Elementary that want to talk about their artwork a little bit.
So my name is Liam Wazner, and I made this Christmas town out of two-point perspective. And, yeah, that's it.
So my name is Brynlee, and I made this artwork about fog. And we made it out of paint sticks and paint, and that's all.
My name is Cruz Hawkins. I made a bear.
My name is Ethan Moore, and I made a circle weaving project.
I am Onyx Chandler, and I made the folder holder.
Oh, here, I have a folder.
The folder holder.
So Onyx is a little modest.
So she invented this with a 3D printer. So our students do, we have kindergarten through fifth grade artwork to kind of showcase today. And they wanted to gift this artwork to our board for their appreciation for you guys. So they've got some artwork gift for you.
Awesome.
Choose your favorite person.
Am I getting that one? So weird.
I get the bear. Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Hey Cruz.
Yeah. You wanna give it to me? Can we get a picture?
So Ray, can we get pictures of the board members and the students?
Let's get a picture with the kids, with the, and the board members with your art.
Ow, right on. Thanks, man.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that's for Meredith. Perfect.
We'll figure it out. There you go. Okay, scooch in a little bit. Yep, okay, perfect. And then, okay, don't go anywhere. And then, parents, you'll have your chance. So hang on a second. All right, parents.
So we had our artists, and now we have our musicians that want to share a little bit of holiday cheer with you all. So our first and second graders had a program last night, and it's incredible we had to share it with everybody.
I'm fighting it, go, right?
He's on my basketball team.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. Yesterday, first and second grade not only performed for parents. In the evening, we also put on a performance during the day for the whole school. So it was really exciting. We got to get all the jitters out. And then last night, we had an absolutely flawless performance with an entirely packed gym. It was incredible. We are so proud of these kids. So this is just a small portion of the kiddos who performed last night. And we're gonna perform two songs for you.
We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Happy holidays to you, your family, your friends. Happy holidays, merry Christmas, and a happy new year.
Let's clap.
We all do a little clapping. We all do a little clapping. We all do a little clapping. Christmas is here.
Let's jump.
We all do a little jumping. We all do a little jumping. We all do a little jumping. Christmas is here.
Let's stop.
We all do a little stopping. We all do a little stopping. We all do a little stopping. Christmas is here.
Let's whisper.
We all do a little whispering. We all do a little whispering. We all do a little whispering. Christmas is here.
Big voices.
We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
So like Mrs. Oldham was saying, we had about 350, 400 people in Carney Elementary's gym. And you would think that's a lot, but we had kids sitting on the front, front row on the floor. And it was just ear to ear. Everybody was elated to be there. Our classroom teachers put a lot of hard work in to set this up. And it was, it was great for everyone. So great all around.
Thank you so much.
You're gonna face me. Go to Mr. Masker, face me. So, there you go. There you go. Yep. Maybe not, maybe not quite that much, but I, I appreciate. All right, okay, big smile, hang tight. Parents, your turn.
Hey, Nick, we're waiting on you again. He's coming back.
Ouch.
Oh, man, where am I at? Oh, no, there I am.
That's jealous. I don't know how to help him.
I just want a Mac. There you go. Okay. All right, next we have public comment. Tanya? We had a couple of people sign up, but I think that maybe they decided not to come. Mr. Nolan, can you make sure that no one's out there that might be? We don't wanna exclude them.
You're my daughter.
That was very good. That's the best thing we've gotten to board meetings.
Oh, yeah. School spotlight. Yeah, absolutely.
Good. All right, great. We'll move on. No public comment then. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Really just a few items for you this evening. On November 28th, we held the Chile Turkey Trot. But we were very excited. It was the second largest registration that we've had. So over 650 people signed up. Not sure all 650 ran or walked. But it was, it ended up being a really nice morning by the time it was all said and done. So on November 30th, wanna really recognize our football team. We played home at our state semifinal. We did not, were not successful. However, I have nothing but high praise for our coaches and our players to finish such a strong season 12-1. You know, during the year, I received a text from another superintendent about the quality of our players and their character on the field. And I just think that speaks volumes. And so our coaches have done a great job, not only coaching athletes, but creating good individuals. So thought I would pass that along. Another exciting update, on December 7th, we had 13 of our band students. They qualified to audition for All-State Band. And we did have one student, Clara Wenzel. She was selected for All-State Band in the flute section. So that was, that's impressive. Couple of dates for you upcoming. On Monday, December 16th, wanna encourage you to come out to the special education, Special Olympics Basketball Jam. That is always a fun night, so if you can be there, I encourage you to go. And then I just wanna forecast, on January 22nd, we will be recognizing all of our students from cross-country cheer, swim and dive, football and band, and recognize their accomplishments throughout the fall semester. I do wanna update you that board filing began this week. The office will be open next week, and it will be open again on the last day of filing, which happens to be New Year's Eve. And so our office will be open between 3:00 and 5:00, if you would like to come in and file. So wanted to pass that along. Also, on December 2nd, that was when the state legislature began to pre-file bills. And already, they've already received 900 pre-filed bills. A hundred, over 100 of those touch education in some way, shape, or form. So we're gonna continue. It looks like it'll be another active legislative session. So with that, we're gonna continue watching that. Just wanna mention that on December 20th, and not like there's a countdown, we will start our holiday break. So I hope you all have a wonderful holiday and Christmas. Our staff has worked incredibly hard, and our kids have just performed amazing things over the first semester. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you. All right, next we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next we have information items. Bond project update. Ben?
Good evening, everybody. So got some good progress to report this month on the three projects. First one is Dogwood, so you can see the foundations are poured there. Masonry starts, we're gonna pour the slab on the 18th is the goal there. And then we'll start masonry. And then first week of January, the hope is that we're erecting steel there. So good progress there. Let's go to the next one. Okay, this one's Hawthorne. This is the furthest one along. Foundations are in place. You can see all the underslab plumbing rough-in is in place on this one. We're gonna pour the slab on this tomorrow. And then again, masonry walls go up, and steel starts right after the new year on this guy. And that'll go pretty quick, because it's a pretty small addition. Now the big one. So Carney Elementary, we're making good progress. That's the crane for, it's the pier drilling crane. And so it drills these big three-and-a-half-foot-wide holes that you pour concrete piers to help reinforce that foundation. So those are complete, which is good news. It's always good to kind of be out of the ground from there. We finished those yesterday. We should start foundation work, or actually, we started that today. And then kind of key dates going forward there. New Year's Eve, we're gonna try to pour the slab if weather works out for us. And then there's about a month of masonry walls that go up. And so targeting the end of January to start the steel on this back addition. We're also going to set up over Christmas break and do the front addition. So we intentionally held off this work until Christmas. Just try to not disrupt the front door any longer than we had to. It's a smaller addition up there, similar to Southview's. So over Christmas, we'll get in. We'll set up a, kind of a temporary entrance, just like we did at Southview. And when kids come back from Christmas break, they'll use that entrance. Still, still entering from the front, but it'll, it'll look similar to what we did this last year. And then that addition builds over the spring and should be done. The addition will probably be done right around the end of the school year. So good progress all around. And it'll start getting exciting here in a month or so, when steel starts going up and things like that. So any questions for me?
Any questions?
My six-year-old would like to know when they're going to share the crane. Carney Elementary gets the big piece of equipment, but when does his building get the big piece of equipment?
Which school's he at?
Hawthorne.
Hawthorne. Well, we'll have to get him introduced to Zach sometime, and he can, he can tell him all about cool equipment. Great. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Can I add something?
Yes.
So with the bond project update, there's always a link of supporting documents. And one of the things I'd like to do is just draw your attention to 2022 bond report. Ginger Elsie has done a fantastic job of trying to track expenditures over a three-year project. She's revised and updated this document, so I want to bring it to your attention. One of the things we wanted to do is be transparent with our finances over, over the course of the three years. And again, this will likely extend probably into a four-year bond, how we spend our proceeds. So I want to bring this to your attention. She's revamped the report. It's streamlined, easier to read and follow. One of the things I do wanna point out is you'll notice an added line item for deferred maintenance project. And Eric Nolan will likely start as early as next week, bringing some projects forward to the board. So we were able to build, renovate our four elementaries, but there was a cost savings there so that we were able to address some long outstanding deferred maintenance items. And I know, Ben, you've been extremely helpful in working with us on getting that scheduled. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Program evaluation in the libraries.
Hello, thank you for having us come talk about our Library Media Center program with you. I am Gina Barkery. I am the Library and Media Specialist at Hawthorne Elementary. Three of us are missing, but I will let the others introduce themselves first.
I'm Lauren Thomas at Carney Middle School.
Sarah Kimmel, Carney Elementary.
Abby Madison, Southview Alens.
Sarah Ross from Dogwood is not doing well tonight. And Sherri Carl from High School and Union Wythe from Junior High, I know they're playing, but I'm sorry they cannot be here tonight.
We wanted to talk about our focus first. Our whole presentation is going to be illustrating the focus of the Library Media Center. I'll just point out some key words to you here. You can read it. But our job is to support the curriculum, but not only support the curriculum, but also ensure that all the students and teachers in our district are living in the information in the society and knowing how to be literate users of information and have a love of reading and pleasure and personal growth in that information. So with the changing things are, AI and other things that are coming on, we're continually working to change our lesson plans. Never have I had the same lesson plans ever in my 29 years of being a library media specialist. So here, we're going to illustrate some things. The things that we show, a lot of them are done in all of the schools, but we're just gonna highlight a few of them in each building.
So whenever we're thinking about what we wanna do in the library or any changes we need to make, we, we're very strategic about what we do. We look at a lot of different data, from circulation data to different trends, to anything that the curriculum needs, that our teachers need, a lot of things that we learn from Maslow. We try to incorporate those things into the library. Simple things like noticing maybe that the nonfiction section isn't circulating. And so then trying out some new ways to shelve the books, right? Anything like that, that we can support our readers, support our students, our teachers. We look at all that before we plan anything in what we do.
Okay, so we have a lot of goals every year. So some of the elementary goals involve the One School, One Book program. We each have reading incentive programs. We have maker spaces, a lot of PBL stuff going on. We partner with Midcontinent. We'll kind of give you more details on those by each school here as we go. Okay, Sarah Ross is at Dogwood, and she couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to try to give her program justice. She, every day, teaches 27 to 28 classes, every day. So that is her whole day with a little bit of lunch. Every week. That's too many in one day. She is awesome, but she's not that awesome. No, she would have seven in a day? Six in a day? Okay. She is that awesome, though. She could do that many. So, okay, two things she wants you to know. Her One School, One Book. I am glad she's not here, so I can brag about her on this. Last year, she did One School, One Book for the very first time in Carney. So if you're not familiar with that program, every student, kindergarten- you're not familiar with that program, every student, kindergarten through fifth grade, gets the same book, and they chose Charlotte's Web. So each kiddo got to take that book home with a schedule, asking families to read that book together each night, like one chapter night, which is like 10 minutes or so, just trying to build a bridge between school and home. And asking families, like, maybe you can get into some sort of little routine with your family and start reading together and building those bonds. And then after about a month of reading, then they had a family fun night. And it was so successful, and they were so shocked with how well all of it went. And all the families were begging, like, what's coming next year? What book are we doing next year? It was so amazing. So now the rest of us are going to give that a shot this year at our building. So that's really, really cool. Thank you, Sarah, for doing that and for doing such a great job with it. And her other thing you need to know about, the last thing, real-world learning theater. Apparently, this involves the kids, it's this picture, the kids looking out the window, watching the construction. That is their real-world learning theater. I think it literally involves each media class plastered up to the windows, asking questions about heavy machinery and the noises that are coming out. I think just the other day, they learned that two cement trucks fit in what will be the new library. So that's very exciting. Good things going on at Dogwood.
And the fact that she's a show-me reader selector up there, I know about that, and that is a lot of reading. So that's amazing that she does that, too. So at Hawthorne, I really push for the 21st century. I've learned a lot from the 21st century classes that all of us go to, and just including critical thinking, communication, collaboration, all the rest into all of my lesson plans and all the activities that I do. With being able to have some flex time, I fill it with all kinds of projects that go with the PBLs that the other teachers teach, the classroom teachers teach. So some of my examples are animal green screen recordings. I just got done doing that. Grafton, Bree's son, has been spending some time in the PBL room, doing some green screen recording, and he said he just doesn't have it quite right yet. So he's still working on that. He loves it. He did a lot of animal research with his class, and then they're making green screens with that. I started at a very young age. I have kindergartners doing some Dear Santa green screens right now with me, where I'm teaching them the parts of recording and then how to put it together into a video. And the parents love seeing that. And I do book trailers, where students come up with book trailers, and then we put it out on my web. I have a showcase that I show all the projects for the whole year. I think Bree's seen it before, that I do a website that shows projects for every student, and it's kind of like a portfolio throughout their years that they're at Hawthorne. With the book fair recently, we were able to buy dot and dashes. We didn't have very many like some of the other buildings, and that was our big purchase. And I really appreciate all the book fair money for that. So that's some of the highlights that I do. Also, in my flux time, I do book clubs with all grades, and starting like first grade. I've had a lot of students doing book clubs, and then they create a project after we read a book together.
Okay. I do several of the things that the other librarians do. We're trying out the one-school-one-book this year. One of the big focuses I've done this year is try to partner up with each grade level during my flux times. I try to get around. I go to their planned times. I kind of talk about what, what are you guys working on? What projects are you doing? And so some of the projects I've done with kindergarten and first grade, I've done a lot of seesaw training with the kiddos, making them comfortable with that app, and even getting the teachers more comfortable with it. When the kids are kind of experts, then the teachers tend to use it a little bit more often. So I've been doing that with them. First grade, I've done several different projects. One of the ones we did was with map skills. We ended up programming some robots to follow map directions after they built a map together. And then we also did a sun, moon, and stars activity where they had to report to the fearless leader, which was an alien on a ship, and tell them all about the sun, moon, and stars on Earth. So trying to do a little perspective with that. We've done a lot of green screen. The kids are pretty inspired by the broadcasting club, and so that's one of the ways that they usually like to present their information that they're learning. So we've done commercials with second grade, magnet invention commercials with third grade, and news reports with fourth grade on environmental concerns. And then we're finishing up a big project with westward expansion, doing a I Survived story. And so those are all just kind of projects that I have a hand in with each grade level. It's really amazing that I have the opportunity to do that, so.
Okay, Southview Alliance. One of the things with our reading incentive that I really think is super cool is the kids, they have to read so many books, and then they hit goals at different points and get different things. And the neat thing is, if you look at that picture of that little guy, his goal was to read seven-chapter books between August and December, and then he'd get to go on a field trip. And he has hit that, and he has just kept going. And they are well aware that they, like, the prizes aren't endless. You don't just keep getting more prizes. The more books you read, it kind of ends around seven. That's like it, the big field trip. And so that's neat that you can see they kind of realize, I do like reading, and that self-motivation kind of kicks in. So that's neat that he's gone well above and beyond. And then with our PBL stuff, I want to highlight fourth grade this time. So fourth graders have a science standard that's all about erosion. So what's cool about my position in the library is I get to teach the kids skills in the library, and then I get to go to their classroom and see them practice those skills kind of in real life for them. So they started their erosion unit with our Lego spike kits, which are basically robotic Legos. So they had to build little models of erosion, and they had to have some movement piece to it. So you've never seen kids so excited about erosion because it involved robotic Legos. And then fast forward to the end of that unit, they got to work with BlockSoul, which is a platform where kids get to make video games from scratch. So they got to make a video game, but it had to teach others about erosion. So we chose to teach second graders about it because second grade also has a standards, a science standard about erosion. And they haven't hit that standard yet. So it's kind of cool because they went to these kids and said, what do you know about erosion? And these second graders are like, I don't know what that means. Okay, play my game. So they play their video game. And now, when they, a month from now, when they get to that standard, they'll have a little background knowledge of it and kind of a good starting point for them. So that's really cool. And my position to be that person in the building that gets to talk to each grade level and make those connections of, oh, you guys are hitting erosion. They're going to hit that soon. What can we do to tie you guys together? How can we connect things? And it's kind of neat to be that person. So that's what's going on at Southview Alliance.
Okay, I'm going to go over all of secondary, since we're missing our two other secondary buildings tonight. Our goals are really similar to the elementary goals. Continue to engage with the kids, incorporate things that we're learning at our Librarians Association into our libraries, partner with Midcontinent, and just help get kids interested in reading at a time in their life where they may be busy with a lot of other things going on. So specifically at the middle school, start there really quickly. We have, over the summer, the area that was where our desktops were housed had three walls with huge benches. And so we were able to take those out over the summer, which has given us a huge flex space to kind of use for our middle school students. And so we have tables there, and our maker space is kind of housed in that area. So I have a puzzle that's just always out, and kids come by during seminar and work on the puzzle together. And it's just kind of building a sense of community, kind of using the library as a place to build a sense of community for our middle school students. We also, all three, and I have, Mrs. Crawl sent something for me to read specifically for her building, but we've all worked on genrefying our nonfiction sections and weeding out just a lot of dated materials. It's given us the opportunity to spread all of our nonfiction books out, and we've seen just definitely an increase in circulation of those. We've taken, for example, like all of our sports nonfiction books are now next to our sports fiction books. So if a student has an interest in a specific sport, they, both options are right there, fiction or nonfiction. Or our adventure books, all of my books about survival and like natural disasters are right next to our adventure fiction. So if you are interested in adventure at all, you're going to go to this set of shelves. And then I'm just working to collaborate. I'm newer to this position, so still working to collaborate with all of our content areas. And all core contents are scheduled to visit the library this year, which is exciting for me. The junior high, Amy has done a lot of the genfication also. She is great with all of her fun things that are drawing students to the library. She has Big Jenga. She has like a life-size chess set this year, a, an escape room that she's worked really hard on. And she's also done all of the genfication and meets with all of the content areas as well. And I believe she's also, she doesn't have up there, but I believe her book club, she's partnered with the Midcontinent Teen Outreach. And so Midcontinent is coming in to help her facilitate the book club at the junior high. And then high school, Mrs. Crawl says, "At the high school library, I focused on completing the genfication of all library sections and implementing dynamic shelving to engage students and guide them towards books that match their interests. So far this year, I've completed the genfication of the nonfiction section and further refined the realistic fiction section by categorizing it into specific areas of interest. These changes have significantly enhanced students' abilities to find books that interest them while creating a browsing experience akin to a Barnes &amp; Noble bookstore." Oh, that's something that we got at MasL. If you go into any of our libraries, we have a lot of forward-facing books now because book finds are not interesting to students. So if any of our libraries, there's just tons of, you can see the covers of a lot of our books. And we've all seen an uptick in circulation, nonfiction and fiction by doing that. Forgot she mentioned that. "I host Bulldog Book Club during Bulldog time twice per month, and we all read one book per month together. I also organize the Staff Book Club at the high school with 23 members. A significant achievement from the second semester of last year was involving high school students in designing our secondary summer reading program for an MVA. I participated in the Kaufman Teacher CCP training, which I highly recommend to fellow educators. For the MVA, I managed both the teacher and client aspects of the project, including creating timelines, rubrics, and guidelines. Instructional English students conducted research on public and school library programs and pitched their proposed summer reading program to Mrs. Whitner, Mrs. Thomas, and me. Their innovative ideas were adopted, including their theme marketing materials and student submission forms, making last year's program a resounding success." So we partnered with the instructional students, English students at the high school, and we're all three able to meet with them to, up in the corner, the Olympic-looking flyer is our summer reading program that all sixth through 12th graders had the opportunity to participate in. So we met with those high school students and just said, we need a summer reading program. What ideas do you have? And since it was an Olympic year, they went with an Olympic theme. They designed all of the materials that were sent out to students, so all of the flyers. They came up with the prize ideas, how many books students should read. They researched other, like, area summer reading programs. So it was a great experience from the teacher's side, and we had great feedback from the students, too. They did an awesome job designing our program. One more. "The secondary librarians collaborated to coordinate annual programming, ensuring consistent monthly themes and activities across our libraries. I celebrate these themes with creative book displays and contests throughout the year. Students frequently visit library for activities that promote reading, writing, and applying technology to real-world scenarios. I also dedicate time to educating students about digital citizenship and the rapidly evolving landscape of artificial intelligence." So a lot of what Mrs. Crawl talked about, we are all doing in our libraries. And so I think it's just a great, library's a great place to be.
Any questions? That was, that was great. That was really good.
Thank you.
What they're doing, not just how many kids, they're supporting instruction.
My boys love library. It's like...
I like the creativity and the curiosity and the problem-solving and all those.
One of their top specialists that they truly love.
I like that a lot.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a program evaluation for parents as teachers.
Sorry.
Has written.
It's written.
Yep, I know. So you're still good, Ray. We just have to mention that we have it. So now we will go to Ray. Our annual survey results.
Good evening, board. I'm Ray Wykel, Director of Communications Community Relations, for all the folks that are out there. I appreciate the opportunity to share a report from our 2024 annual survey. In alignment with pillar three of our strategic plan, responsive leadership and community engagement, we ask parents, guardians, students, employees, and community members to provide valuable feedback by completing this annual survey. This year's survey was administered from October 2nd through October 25th using the Qualtrics platform. The responses are anonymous. The survey was updated significantly from last year to this year. Stakeholders were prompted to respond to an initial set of 20 questions covering the most critical areas. Then they had the opportunity to answer additional questions focused on schools, programs, and services, including human resources, IT, and communications. I built a detailed dashboard using the Qualtrics platform with all that data. I will be reporting data tonight. That data will be used by district and school administrators to measure the district's progress towards achieving our strategic goals and to drive improvement because that's what we're all about. This is very much a 30,000-foot overview tonight of the results. A complete report has been provided to you. Some context, the survey was administered right around the time that we were coming out of a period where there was a lot of public concern about public, about safety and security, communications and procedures. There was also a lot of, I would call it lively political discourse involving public education and public services. So that may have had an impact on some of the results that we had, just the timing of the survey in general. I will be proceeding swiftly through this report because I honor your time, respect your time, and will take questions at the end. We had nearly 3,000 responses this year, which was an uptick from last year. A lot of that uptick was due to having more parents and guardians respond. Still, the largest contingent was students, which is great because we want to hear from our students. We want to see, we want to know what we're doing well and where those areas of improvement are. And definitely, one area where I need to focus on for next year is getting more community members, so those folks that are not within our bubble, to respond to the survey. That's an area of growth for next year. So these are Likert averages. We asked folks to respond to what extent they agree or, you know, to rate their perception of the district. Each of those prompts had a score. This is an average of those scores, broken down by respondent type. Overall ratings were generally steady at around four. There were some slight declines in every response group. I will add that only 4% of the respondents to this, to this particular question selected below average or poor. So there were a lot of averages in this case. And we are always committed to understanding and addressing the underlying factors to these declines that we see here, because we always want the numbers to be ticking up, obviously. Excellence in education, excellent educational experiences. This is the centerpiece of everything we do. Again, generally stable from year to year. There was an increase slightly among parents and guardians and staff, and then a decline of about four percentage points among students. Only 6% of the respondents disagreed that we're providing excellent educational experiences. But again, there's always an opportunity here to take a deeper look and figure out how we can be, you know, increasing these responses, these numbers. We always want to be using our resources effectively, and we want the public to perceive that that is the case, right? So unfortunately, in this case, we did see a decline in the percentage of staff and parents, guardians who believe that the district uses resources effectively. Again, for some context, 17% of the respondents flat-out disagreed that we use our resources effectively. I do think there's an opportunity for improvement here, certainly for me as the district's lead storyteller, because I just think that, you know, there's a lot, maybe some misperceptions out there, because I know that, you know, in fact, our operations and our financial management and all those aspects of it, that those folks do a great job of using our resources. We asked students to indicate the extent to which our schools have a positive culture and climate. They respond to a wide range of specific prompts. These are the top five qualities. And so I think if you look at these, so excellent principle, high expectations for classwork, great teachers, support staff, they have a trusted adult that they can turn to for support. And then they're being taught to treat others with dignity or respect. I really think this is a testament to our school leaders and our staff. They really do an amazing job, and this reflects that. And, you know, this is, would be at the other side of that scale. So these would be students who, there's the things that students see less evidence of in their schools. These would be the bottom five. I think it's important to point out... I think it's important to point out that these still all round up to four, so keep that in mind. These are all, these are all still very good results, and, you know, we, we definitely want to make sure that we are diving into this, and as we're moving forward, that we're addressing these, these needs among our, that students are identifying. And then we asked our students to then tell us what we should be focusing on, so that the things we just looked at were, here are the things that exist in our schools. Now we want to know, what should we be focusing on as a school district, right? And so we, you know, these really, it's a great opportunity, these are the top 10 responses. And so this is a great opportunity for us, again, to look at particularly, where are the discrepancies? So if students are telling us that, in this case, safety and security is the most, should be the highest priority, and, and they're not experiencing that at school, which I don't, I, I'm not saying that's true, but let's say that is the case, then that would be an opportunity where we want to, where we could leverage, you know, an opportunity for improvement, right? The state has some mandated reporting requirements with this data that we also include as part of our survey, so you can see the results here. They all went up, and so, you know, obviously, we're looking forward to reporting this to the, to the state. Like students, we ask parents and guardians and employees to rate the extent to which specific and desirable qualities currently exist in our schools. Again, I think if you look at these, this is the top five, well-qualified teachers and staff, ensuring that every school is led by high-quality principal, caring learning environment, safe and secure environment, and making learning fun and engaging. Again, this is a real, a real testament to our team of public educators. They, they really are doing an outstanding job, and certainly, parents and guardians recognize that. And then this would be the bottom five from that same prompt. Again, still generally very strong results. You know, I think there's, there's some opportunity for growth there, as there are with the other areas. The one here that I wanted to point out, that I think is particularly troubling to me, that I definitely want to focus on as we move forward, is that financial responsibility and integrity. I, that's just flat-out, you know, I, there's a story that I need to be telling there to the, to the public, right? Because we know that, in fact, that we are, we have excellent financial management, and I think you can, the evidence there is the audit that you all approved last month, so, you know, that's a, that's an opportunity for growth. We asked staff to what extent they agree that we provide a supportive work environment and healthy work-life balance. This was a slight increase year over year. Only 16% disagreed that we are providing that work-life balance. And we asked staff to rank a list of benefits from most to least important. So in this case, a lower number is more important, and a higher number is less important. So no surprise, salary and compensation was the most important factor. But I think it's definitely worth noting that workplace culture and climate was the second most important thing that they identified in terms of benefits. So, you know, if you're asking yourself, why do we put so much time and effort into culture and climate? This is one of the reasons why we do that, because it's important. Differentiated PD, so we asked staff to indicate, again, the degree to which they believe we're providing valuable professional development, career-long development for them. This was an increase, a significant increase year over year. So again, this is just a real testament to the work that Jennifer and her team and academics are doing in terms of making sure that our staff are getting that, that career-long learning that they need to be able to do a great job every day. This is our communications. This is my area. So kind of a mixed bag this year. Overall, communications and keeping students informed decreased slightly, whereas there was a decent increase in the ratings for public engagement. Again, I'll be breaking down this data, using it to drive the work that I do. So that is my report. I do want to thank everybody who responded to the survey. Your input is important and invaluable and will be used. The data dashboard, I want to reinforce that the data dashboard includes school-specific data, so all of the principals now have access to that data as they begin to develop their improvement plans and their, their strategic plans moving forward. The full report will be available on our website at ksdr dot, ksdr1.net/annualsurvey. And do you have any questions?
Can you go back to the slide where the teachers, what they ranked of importance? So salary compensation was the number one, climate, so I have a question that maybe you don't have an answer to, Ray, but it's more of a, it would be interesting to hear what their responses would be. On the climate and culture in the workplace, what exactly could they pinpoint on that? Or I don't know if that's a question that you can throw in Qualtrics for next year, or...
Right, so, so one of the things that we had folks provide some qualitative responses in the, in the section that you could opt into, if you wanted to provide more. And so there's definitely some qualitative data that we can use, using Qualtrics to analyze that and drill down a little bit in terms of, you know, what are those things? But also that, you know, that may, there may be some follow-up work that we may need to do to identify, again, you know, how do we continue to make that an area where folks are seeing some quality, right?
Right.
You know, one of the things I've, I've started to, I've done some training, some Qualtrics training, and, and, you know, there are some tools out there that, that we're going to be utilizing moving forward to improve our engagement and do some pulse checking and that kind of thing, but I don't necessarily, you know, want to get too much into the weeds tonight, you know.
And then the other part of it is, is that the only thing that I noticed from it is that, I mean, you do a great job, Ray, with how you present the school, and I want you to know that I believe that wholeheartedly. The question that I have with, from seeing some of this data is that it, there's got to be a way that we can share more about what we do financially, and maybe it's just because it's not, it's, it's not, you know, flashy or exciting to, to see, hey, you know, we're spending our money wisely with the bond, or it's not exciting to see that we're hitting our targets on percentages of, you know, reserves. I don't know how to make that exciting, but it sounds like that that's another piece. It would be an opportunity for, for us to really, you know, dive in on, and I don't know what the right answer on that is either.
And even, even this year, we tried to go back in, in the quarterly publication and, and say, here are the things that we've done, right? And, and stress that. We have to find a way that resonates a little bit more, right? And, and that's a lengthy explanation, so it's not like something you can just quickly post on social media, right? So, and, and where, and we have to go to where people are reading or, or listening.
Right. Right, and, and this is, again, some of the work that I'll be doing is, and I, because I agree with you 100%, is taking a look at, I'm a big believer in, as we say in my business, admiring and acquiring, right? And so who, what districts are doing this well? Who's having some success, telling those times of, kinds of stories, and then learning from them, so that we can emulate that kind of thing.
Maybe the disconnect isn't with the, the factors you're talking about, it's that, you know, fundraising and things that happen, sometimes people equate. How's all that connecting?
Absolutely, he's gonna have, he'll probably dive in and figure that out. That'd be my guess.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, next, action items. Music invoice.
Move to approve payment of the invoice for music as presented.
So one of our obligations is to...
We need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I was anxious, I was anxious.
Somebody was asleep here.
You're right.
Go ahead.
So one of our obligations is to secure insurance for the district, and we have previously used Music, Missouri United School Insurance Council, its consortium, a self-insurance pooling program, nonprofit, and our premiums have gone up here recently, last two years. This, this year has gone from $660,000 to $884,000 in premium. Most of this has to do with weather-related issues across the state of Missouri for the last two years, which, when you're in your pooling programs, you have to spread the down years around, and that's, that's caused a lot of our increases over the last two years. Also, part of that goes back to an increase in payroll that factors into a formula that they use, an increase in property assessment, which goes into the formulas they use, and also that we've had a uptick in workers' comp. So those factors have caused our premiums to go up. As years that we don't have these outbreaks of weather and claims, we, they, they push those proceeds back to the members in a credit, which we had back in '22, '23. So if, if, if we get back to that, then, then hopefully, we come back down to receiving a credit with, with the money that the consortium pools together. So just wanted to give you a little background on, on what we're, what we're asking for approval. It's a peace of mind to have 91% of the public school districts in the state of Missouri are part of this, of Music, so just, any questions?
So do we, is this, how long of agreement is this, one year?
I know we sign it annually.
We do sign it annually. Is there other companies that we can look at?
So...
I know Music is a, when you say, when it's a consortium, I understand that a whole lot of the school districts in the state of Missouri use Music, because it is a big number, but...
Yes, and I think there's some districts that use local, but Eric's done a little bit of research. Do you want to speak to what...
Sure. It had, not, not, they didn't dive too deep into it, but started asking some questions with some insurance contacts. Sometimes this policy is catered to public education, and you have a lump of everything that's needed by a, by a district. One, if you, from what I understand, if you go out to a brokerage house, that a lot of them would have to then piece together different parts of the policies that we would need. So we'd have one policy for cybersecurity, then your general liability, your, so different, different policies for each of those pieces. And this one is catered to public education, all-in-one with all of the things we need.
Is it fair to say, because it's comprehensive, it's more cost-effective as opposed to piecemealing it?
Potentially.
Potentially, right. And so...
I mean, that's a sizable gain. That's the only reason why I would look at it, because, I mean, that's a couple...
It's also not like the private insurance industry, where you shop it every three years.
That's what I said, Music, it's the only game in town in the state of Missouri, you can use Music. Like, that has a full...
So, if you, if you, I'm aware of that. If you, if you, sorry to interrupt you.
Nope.
If you were to get out of Music, one of the stipulations is you can't re-enter the group for five years, so...
They've got you. Yeah.
Makes it...
It's a 33% gain in one year.
Yep.
Maybe next year, look at the option of, if it is piecemealed, what that does look like. I know that's a lot of legwork, but I, I would at least entertain that, because this is sizable.
When we've gotten credits in the past, were they sizable credits?
No.
$55,061.
Okay. Have we ever seen a decrease from one year to the next? Or, or something, or something, or something remained close to the same? Well, I'm just saying, if you say, we're going to go up by $200,000 because of all of the stuff that happened this year, and the next year, it's a pretty good year. Have we ever seen it come back down to, to something that was prior?
I just have, I have the last four years on there, and it was, it was an 8% increase, 18, then 25.
Okay.
And, and you also got to figure in what has happened to the cost of replacement materials over the last five years as well.
Just the last two years, I mean, to replace...
This number's going to go up again next year, because you have the new buildings that are going to finish sometime in the summer. So, I mean, you're looking at another 20, 25% possible gain on that number. I understand having insurance, but at the same level, that's, that's a sizable amount, because you are adding on to two elementaries, three, well, all four elementaries. Deferred maintenance will matter.
If approved, we still have a year to do, do a little bit of legwork.
Yeah, well, I'm, oh, I'm not, not approving it, I'm just saying that it'd be good for you guys to...
Explore.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will do.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks for the explanation, appreciate that. All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the 25-26 academic calendar.
Move to approve the 2025-2026 academic calendar as presented.
Second. I was slow on the last one.
All right. That was fast. Can you highlight this for us?
Yeah, sure. Very similar to this last year's calendar, to the 24-25 calendar. I just want to recognize a few people. Number one, Mrs. Kopp in the Professional Development Committee, they provided a lot of feedback in regards to where the professional development days were placed, and so that's where a lot of the changes have happened on this calendar. Also, Tammy Thomas, our data coordinator, she always crunches the numbers for us to make sure that we're accomplishing the hours that we need to. And the Salary and Benefits Committee, this, this calendar is really a team effort. This is probably the quickest and smoothest that we've put one of these together. It was a very good, quick process, and really just a unanimous agreeance by the committee when we, we had it finished. Again, most, the only changes really are the placement of the professional development days, and then the breaks as the calendar falls naturally. So any questions about the calendar? Still has 170 Kit Contact Days, so we're in compliance with Senate Bill 727, so we're available, or we're eligible for that teacher compensation, or excuse me, staff compensation incentive that the state offers. It'll be a 2% that following year, or a bonus, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
And we, even with this calendar, we will still be looking at AMI days, just unless there's something, some legislative changes, just, just note that as well. Right, right.
SB 727.
That's right, yep.
Hey, so February 11th, is there, I mean, like, a Wednesday PD day? I'm ju, I'm just saying, like, as a parent, eh, could you not got it closer to the weekend? I'm just saying.
It was done strategically.
Okay.
Yeah. We've had, we've had some activities where families and students have wanted to attend on that, that Wednesday, so just trying to take the kids out of the equation on, on that, on that date.
Okay, fair enough.
We don't want to forfeit a school day.
Oh, for a, for an event?
Yeah, for an event.
Okay.
A whole week off and for Thanksgiving, is that correct?
That's correct. So that Monday and Tuesday, that is new. So the Monday and Tuesday before, the traditional three-day Thanksgiving break, those have normally been days that we are in session.
What's attendance look like on those days?
Those aren't great days for attendance, right?
Getting that on.
The, the, I would say that our students' buy-in to education probably isn't as high as it normally is during the regular year, and so this is also a strategic time when the end of, so we have the end of first quarter about a month before, the Professional Development Committee thought that would be a great time to finish up some trainings before the end of the semester and, and be, be ready to implement things for the start of the second semester. But it is a, it is a trial, so if it doesn't go well, we'll definitely look at it again next year. This is something that's very different. Any other questions or...
The ones with the most kids are the ones who spoke up. Correlation there?
I've been in districts where they've done that before. It's gone well. I've, I've seen success, and that's what I've, when I've experienced.
It's not uncommon in our area.
It's the first year that, that's the change, it's the biggest part, but once you do that, it tends to go pretty well.
Okay.
I think it's crucial, what are you going to do those two days? Having a clear plan on that.
I agree.
Because otherwise, yeah.
Mrs. Kopp has talked about that as well. That's going to be crucial to have that planned.
Absolutely.
Lay it out.
And be well structured. Yep, she, that was her first concern, and the thing that she brought up, I would say, the most frequently when we talked about that change. Good point.
All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 25-26 Program of Studies?
Move to approve the 2025-2026 Program of Studies as presented.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Gus, he did a nice job laying out on the page, all the different changes, and, and it's in red, so you can easily see them on the draft. It is nice to get this approved early. That way, our high school counselors, as well as our ninth-grade counselors, they can start working with kids on schedules already for next year and get that stuff tied down early. But as a reminder, this is a living document. They will continue making changes. You guys have approved something earlier tonight, changed our current year's Program of Studies, so it is always changing. I'm not going to go through every other change, but I did want to point out a few of the changes.[1797.78] but I did want to point out a few of the changes. They have, they would like to add the language saying that in order to platinum seal, which is the highest level. They would like to require your students full-time, all the way through that second semester. Kids have lots of opportunities to get lots of credits. We would like to keep them in there, have them get that extra MPA, get those real-world learning experiences and start graduating early. And that's going to be an incentive. Okay, and schools that are graduating. Any questions on that one? Okay.
Hold on, Jennifer, what, what's the purpose of that? Like, I mean, like if a kid can graduate early and they are a high achiever that semester? Walk me through that because I'm not saying that I disagree with you, but I just want to make sure we're talking all. What's the downside of them leaving? Yeah, I mean, like if they have an opportunity to go do an internship, wouldn't we want to let them do that? Or they can enroll in college a semester early?
On average, how many kids do we have?
And that may be even a better question. I'd like, I'm not saying this is a bad thing. I'm just saying, like, help me understand that process.
And I can get the number for you, but I will tell you, it is more and more every year. Kids are, I mean, honestly, we have kids that are graduating at the end of their junior year because it's easier to get credits. There's lots of ways to get credits online now. We offer more and more in the summer, all the time, ways for kids to earn credits and.
If, if we give them the incentive and the opportunity to do that, why do we then punish them by removing that platinum seal as an option?
I don't know that it's, it, I don't see it as punishing. I think it's just, I think there's so many things they can do in school and sometimes I think kids are just in such a hurry to get out when there are other opportunities. They can still do internships. They can be a full-time student and be doing an internship. They can be doing early college.
See, that's what I'm trying to get at, like what's the, like, what's the true line here, right? That we're talking about as far as, you know, how involved are they? I mean, if they're going straight to college, is that a bad thing?
Well, they can be, they can do college and still be a full-time student without.
We've got an early college program.
So the platinum seal is really more about the breadth of the experience rather than, than how fast you can graduate, but it, you're graduating with credits, but also other things that make your experience richer.
And one of the big things.
Yeah, here we go.
It's additional credits for the platinum seal, but it's also they have to earn two market value assets as opposed to one with the others.
Do you want to walk through the credits for, for each diploma? Maybe that's helpful.
The, um, the gold is, gold is.
24. Was it 24?
24 credits. Now, purple is 24. Gold is 25 and a half. And then platinum is 28 credits. Platinum's the only one that does require two market value assets.
Okay.
It's just, I think Darlene had said it well. Yeah.
Okay.
So if they still want to leave, I mean, they can, it's just not the highest seal.
Do other high schools offer, I mean, I know that we just redid this however many years ago, but other schools offer these levels of diplomas?
Liberty offers the three levels of diplomas. We kind of worked in tandem on these things through the whole world learning initiative.
And in terms of a college asking how many credits you have from high school, do, is there requirements from colleges?
I think they're going to.
The two top diplomas are college-bound diplomas. Both of them would be pretty equal.
No requirements, right? There's no.
Different requirements, so many years of English, so many years of math. But also looking ahead to scholarships, the scholars, especially competitive scholarships, are looking for that breadth of experience and other things that students are doing outside of the classroom or courses that they've taken outside of the basics.
More and more, all the time.
And, and that gives those students a leg up for especially competitive scholarships, I think.
I think graduating early, does that remove them from scholarship opportunities?
Sometimes it does.
Okay. I think colleges will evaluate what's on the transcript, not whether it's platinum or purple.
Right, right. Okay.
I don't think it hurts those that want to graduate early.
Right.
It, those that have that designation though, have had a different experience ultimately.
And I would say honestly, the ones that want to graduate early, they probably don't care that much about that platinum.
Okay.
And we go in cycles on kids leaving early and like, it's not always, like we've, we have cycles up and down of how many kids are leaving or are we on an uptick?
We're on an uptick. And it's because there's so many more opportunities for them to get credits early.
Is that something, we can provide that to you in a future update.
Yeah. So we encourage them, we give them a lot of opportunities to graduate early, but then tell them not to do it? Ah, someone did it. I don't think it's that way, no way.
We don't, the reason.
Want to just be clear that I know what's going?
The reason we give them lots of opportunities to get credits is to open up their schedule later on to do those real-world learning opportunities. So they can go do their internships and things like that.
We want students to take risks in high school so they have a good understanding of what they want to do outside of high school.
Okay. That's a great way to say it.
Okay. Another one we are going to, they already have Principles of Ag Science in Plant and Animal, but we are now going to have it for dual credit. Maplewood says, picked that up, so that'll be a nice opportunity for the kids. We have added Truman State as a dual credit provider and that will be with our math classes. You all approve Computer Science earlier. And that is, that's going to be a great opportunity for kids. The new computer programming class that also counts as a math credit is a great opportunity for kids that they just are, are not wanting to take a lot of those upper-level math and this can't count as a math credit. So we added computer programming this year. It's been very successful. That teacher wants to add on this, um, the. Computer, I mean, um, Computer Science as a second math credit through sci- through. He will teach both of those at the same time within the same classroom. Just because he has so many kids that have carried over in the second semesters. I think that's next year. And we did want to make the change from calling it health to have a family education, that he's a DSA required. Change that, so that might be a run fling for people. That is not asked. Teachers wanting to change classes a little bit. Some classes they're going to add in. And we'll see if they make, see if there's enough interest. Those, those are remaining.
All right, any other questions? All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the elementary boundary change.
Move to approve the elementary boundary change, beginning with the 2025, 2026 school year as presented.
Second.
We are bringing this item back. We had a healthy presentation last month as well as good discussion and questions. But we felt like it was very important for you to take time to think about what was presented, listen to patrons and receive feedback and really bring this back. Just as a quick recap, we started the process, you know, the steering committee really started to pull together and work on it in July. We published notice. We had a lot of great community responses to be on the boundary team as a testament to our team. We've got members here this evening that are out in the audience and I, it's, it was a dynamic, high-powered team that really invested a lot of time, really kind of pushed and pulled on topics to try to come up with this recommendation. And a principal, elementary principals are here as well tonight. The recommendation is we are recommending that grids 12A and 12B that are currently in Carney Elementary attendance area, just north of 92, they will shift and go south, to Southview Elementary. We're also recommending that grid 15, south of 92, that's currently in the Dogwood attendance area, move and go to Carney Elementary. Ryan, do you want to go to the next slide? And again, you've seen these numbers. Really, the, what we are attempting to do is, one, get ahead of growth. We know that Dogwood and Southview currently are using the LENS program to offset some of the enrollment crunch. If those students were currently in their buildings, we, we would be experiencing above that 470, which is the ideal threshold. Again, so really what we're trying to do is really offset anticipated growth in particular to Dogwood Elementary. The boundaries will also create a more balanced approach to serving free and reduced lunch students. With that, that's the recommendation. And I just really wanted to spend some time and open it up to you if you had questions or concerns that we needed to provide additional information.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, I thought about it a lot over the last couple of weeks about like what's the right move, what's the right decision, you know, what's best for Carney schools? And I got to be honest with you, Bree said probably the best line that probably stuck with me the best, which is all four of these elementary schools, I would send my kids to any of the four.
Hands down.
And I think that when you said that, I just, that it was a very, very wise statement. And I think that that's what's the most important. And maybe five years ago, that wasn't the case. But now I really feel that this is, this is a good move. I, I think change is tough. That's the other part of this.
They're not discounting that this won't be.
Huh?
They said, we're not discounting that it won't be hard. I mean, like that change.
Change is, that change is not easy for everybody and I understand that. But I think that it's, it's going to be good for our kids in the long run. And I think that this was a well-thought-out, it took a lot, I mean, the committee took a lot of time. I feel like this is not a rushed decision. I think that this is a very well, well-thought-out, well-logically-placed decision. And again, I'm just starting this off. I know everyone else will give their thoughts on it. But I also feel that this is, I mean, we've got good, good leadership in the buildings. And so I really feel really confident, probably more confident in that with the change, that they can handle it. And so absolutely, I think it's a, it's a good decision for the board.
I hate to put them on the spot, but they have been very deliberate and intentional about thinking forward about if this is approved, what comes next, right? Because I think that's where we're kind to people, if we're clear, right? Notifying people, informing them, giving them clear deadlines. Also coming up with a plan to transition students. Rebecca or Mitch, would either one of you want to step to the podium and? Or just, just an overview?
Are you just going to read what she wrote? Is that what I just heard you say?
So how this works is I just talk and Rebecca organizes and makes it look good. So, I mean, yeah, we, we've got a lot of things in place to make sure that we're doing what's right for our families and our kids. That's ultimately the goal, is just making sure that these buildings are ready for new students. If you all approve that, we're excited about it. The good thing about our team is we're very cohesive. We talk a lot and we are every day, every quarter, working for consistencies between our buildings. We still have a long ways to go with that, but we have, you know, behavioral, social, emotional, kind of foundational things in place that are going to support kids at every building. So we've gone through and just kind of talked about some of those things that we do, how we're going to communicate to the families that are affected, opportunities for them to engage with us over the course of, starting in January. So we have some tentative events starting in January to bring people into our buildings. Of course, we're going to have the doors open for anyone that wants to come to their building or talk to their administrator at any point. PTO meetings, all of our parent-teacher organizations have been kind of looped in on this process and they know that it's, it's also their job to kind of be spokesperson for our, our buildings. You know, we can, we can tell them the pretty story of our buildings, but our parents are the ones that are, are, are leading it and living it. So we've engaged with them to kind of be open to talk to the new families as well, which is going to be a, a big deal. And then at the beginning of the year, of course, we are going to have more things ready for our families and kids than we have in years past because we know that we need to be intentional about building that community that they currently won't have coming into. They're going to come into a new place where they're not going to feel comfortable, regardless of how we roll out the red carpet in the spring into next year. The, the kids are, are going to transition well. But our parents need to know that coming to a new place, it's not scary. So we've got a lot of different events. Back to, back to school night is kind of chaotic, so we know that we need to bring them back in and show them the building, tour the new spaces, meet teachers and parents from those grade levels in a different light, too. So we've kind of have a, a month-by-month almost trajectory that I think that Dr. Miller shared with you all.
And when you say that the principals talk and you guys collaborate together, teachers do that as well, right? So this isn't, I don't feel like that that just is upper-level. It's not border wars, it's not KU versus NU, so to speak. I mean, these teachers are reaching out to each other.
A little bit, and we like to have a little bit of competitive nature.
I understand that.
But yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, too, because, you know, we've, we've talked. We have engaged with our, our childcare providers in the community. We want them to be aware that we're going to be very intentional about placing students in classes as well. You know, if, if Dogwood students come to Carney Elementary, Dogwood's going to help me make those class lists. Parks, Dr. Parks is going to talk to me about those Carney Elementary students that are going to Southview so that they have a sense of belonging with the students that they're comfortable with going into those class sections. We are going to be very intentional about that as well. And that will trickle out to our, our childcare facilities as well. We want those students to have familiar faces. There's going to be some changes and we want to make sure that they at least have someone, some, to be, to be comfortable in those, those classrooms.
They're all bulldogs, that's the great part, right?
Yes, that's true.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts?
I will say that the board has received some communication, emails from folks, and we've all looked at all of that information and take it into account very carefully as we make this decision. And, and I know that administration has responded on our behalf to those in most cases and sometimes we have responded individually. And we really appreciate that. I think maybe the theme of some of those was wanting more time, maybe moving too quickly, that kind of thing. But it seems to me, especially compared to when we talked about this before and didn't, didn't proceed for a variety of reasons. But we had a very intentional process on the front end, but making the decision now, we're giving a lot more time after the decision to make the change than maybe has been considered in the past. And to me, that is really important because that's what's going to help our kids and our families the most. It's tough to tear the Band-Aid off, but then the healing starts. And hopefully there's not a lot of healing, but there's a lot, there's just some change. So I'm excited about the fact that if we vote to do this, that we can start planning tomorrow for something that will not happen until next fall. And so there's a lot of time for our folks to do that. And the enthusiasm that we hear from those that are interested in doing that is, it's going to be good work to do and so we really appreciate that.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Just so publicly, do we have seven votes?
Yes, we have seven votes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Board member comments?
You mentioned the football team and I wanted to say that as well, that I think it was super sad leaving that stadium. But also how very cool it was to have the community come out and show up on a Saturday, snowy Saturday morning with shovels and brushes and blowers. I mean, everything, it was, it was great to see everybody jump in and be part of that. I do think that Coach Minnick and his staff has done an incredible job with those boys and girls. I know that everyone's involved, not only on the field, but off the field. As a mother of two boys that will be coming up through, the off-the-field characteristics that they have is, is very important to me. So. that they have is, is very important to me, so, good job Bulldogs.
Very good. All right, important dates, we will have a special board meeting December eighteenth, I think that's next Wednesday, right? At seven-thirty a.m., to take, take care of some business that needs to be taken care of, that is a public meeting as well, just a little bit different time.
You guys coming to that, too?
[laughter]
I don't think we'll have to have you that day, so, thank you, though. December twentieth is a half-day, and kicks off the winter break, which lasts until January third. What?
Break lasts forever.
We will be ready for January fourth. December thirty-first, board candidate filing ends, and as Dr. Miller mentioned, the office will be open from three to five. January sixth is the Professional Development Day, so I guess it's January seventh that you're waiting for. January seventh, school resumes. All right. Miscellaneous.
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in January, including any rate, any, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section six-one-zero-dash-zero-two-one of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Call please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Len Broughton?
Yes.
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
John Kern?
Yes.
Bree Schweitzer?
Yes.
Nick Fuskes?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
We return. Thank you.